So, here we are. One thing that's right through through this process is there seems to be savings in combining these projects. They share a lot of utilities, they share a roof, they share an elevator, sewer system. And it's also a dose of reality. This process has taken a long time and our cost per square foot has really grown. So, this is where we're at. We're gonna have a presentation. Eric's one's the chair of the building committee. I'm also a member of the building committee. I guess now I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Great. Jeff and everybody, thank you for coming. As JR said, this is a result and part of probably part of the process that we would have hoped to do anyway. We brought up the selectmen's meeting, so hopefully this is just the same information, a little different form. We would like to hear from you. That's, that's the point of having a public meeting that's outside a building committee meeting, that's outside a board of selectmen. So, as JR said, you know, there was an approved, presented project at 6.5 million. And from 2016 until today, there is escalation cost in the market. We're in that cycle of construction costs where year over year, it's at least five, almost six percent in terms of increases. And it's a compounded increase each year, which has added cost to our, our budget numbers that we use. The budget numbers that we did use for the building committee were for 2015, early 2016. We did have some escalation in there, but we didn't, at that time, with the condition of the marketplace construction, we didn't think it was gonna be this booming at this time. So, we were a little short there. With that approved project, we then went out to hire, as the state requires, for a project of, of over a million dollars in procuring and using tax dollars for public construction. There are certain laws to follow. And we hired to hire an OPM firm to help manage the process and hire a design team. And when we say architect or design team, we have an architect, and the architect has structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, civil engineer as part of the quote "design team." So, it's just not one firm, there's several firms in that design team. And so after, after that process, to start again, we picked up the information from CSS Architects, which was started in 2013, where they did initial surveys and interviews. And we went back and re-interviewed the police station, re-interviewed the town hall, even did an interview with a fire station here in order to check and assess the current needs for the project that we would be presenting or building. I think the last thing we wanted to do was build a project and find out on day one that we were deficient in spaces because of older information. That said, the 6.5 million that was presented, was presented as part of three or four schemes that night that included everything in recap from a police station, a fire station, police station, a police station, town hall renovation addition, a new police, new town hall, new police station in the combined facility. And there were various numbers or estimates in the presentation, kind of like à la carte, you select this, you get this. And basically, we selected 6.5, which is the lowest common deno, lowest common number on the table for the projects. And what that means is that you could build a police station on the far lot within the 6.5 million, but the resultant leftover money would be then be for town hall renovations. And the renovations of town hall were deficient in terms of completing the tasks. This town has before it a police station need, a town hall need, and eventually something at the fire station here. Those were all identified long ago, and were identified back in 2012, when the board of selectmen at that time formed the public safety complex committee and the Woodward School Committee to look at Woodward School for reuse for town facilities. And thought at that time that combining this fire station and a police station together would make the most cost effective project, you know, started in 2012. So, here we are today with the architect, with our OPM, after that initial program was done. And of course, they, you know, the program is like, what would you like at town hall? What are your future needs? What is everything that you need? The program came in quite high, large, and the pro, and the, the cost came in quite high. And so that, that's the normal part of the process, I think, from some people got alarmed, but I also think it was a necessary part of the process to then bring us back to, okay, if we work it backwards now and we select a budget of which we have presented at town hall, a board of selectmen's meeting a few times now, in terms of saying, if we had an 8.5 budget, what does that mean? And then we try to build out the program that would meet that dollar. And it's the same thing we did last night, we picked a dollar and then tried to fit what we could into it. So, from that amount, we determined with the selectmen that that program that was presented for 8.5 million was just too small and was still missing spaces that were needed for the basic operations. So, program moved up a little bit, and with that program and the development of that program is the option that we're gonna re-present here today. It's the option that we presented at the board of selectmen's meeting last Tuesday and voted on. With that, I think Jeff, I'll ask you to just walk through the current, current option on the table.
Sure.
The option on the table.
Can everybody hear me? Okay. My name is Jeff Shaw. I'm principal of context architecture. And as Eric said, we've been working with the town for most of the year, looking at from the beginning, a very thorough space needs analysis for both the town hall and police. And from that beginning point, running through a number of iterations to get us to this point today. So, I'm gonna focus on the proposed option. Starting to your left, my right, the site plan that's there before you. The, the project proposes to remove the existing town hall and replace it with a larger building, 18,600 square feet, on two floors, approximately starting at where the lowest level of the existing building is, which has police functions in it, and then another level above that. And that would replace the existing town hall in this location here. This is the white dash line is the existing town hall, and obviously that is the new building here. The building would sit closest to Morgan Ave and High Road to allow us to get parking behind and to the side, and also to allow us to reconfigure the driveways here and here to reduce the safety issues that are present in the current configuration, where there's big, large opening here and a large opening here, and it's a little confusing as to where you're supposed to go. So, these two driveway openings lead to this parking here, some of which will be reserved for police use only, similar to how it is now, and some of which goes to garages at this lowest level for the police department. We'll also maintain the connection to the rear of the existing fire station. There'll be two separate entrances, one at the upper level, set of stairs and a ramp, so that this handicap accessible to the main town hall floor, which is, I'll explain in a minute, the upper floor, and then an entrance at the lower level for the police station. There will be an elevator in the building to allow you to get between both floors from the inside of the building. But breaking up the entry points into two allows folks to go to one door or the other, depending on the type of business that they have. On the other end of the site, we're going to take the existing lot that's there that has some paving on it, which is approximately, you know, this region right here, and expand it into a full parking lot for approximately 80 parking spaces. With this new parking lot, plus the parking that we're making around the town hall, police station building, we will meet the parking requirements for police, fire, and town hall on this site. So, obviously, the rest of the site will be fully landscaped with sidewalks, curbing, and all the requisite utilities for the building. This board here has the building plans. On the left is the lower level, on the right is the upper level, the town hall level. So, at the town hall level, again, come in if you'd best of you with a lobby, most of the public functions of the building would be up front, or the private functions, even though they're all public, it's a town hall, so there's ways going everywhere, are in the back. And then there's an elevator and a stair to get you down to the police level. Police level here, all of the police functions, essentially the secure function of the building around the back and sides, with the main dispatch room in the center. And then of more importance to this group here is the train, a training room and a selectmen's meeting room in this corner. And I should say that the main reason why this is being proposed is for a couple of items that have already been said, is that combining both the police and the, and the town hall into one building allows, allows us to take advantage of combined savings of things like elevators, stairs, exterior wall, structure, mechanical systems, spaces like the training room, we can combine that for the training room for the police, town, selectmen's meeting room for the town hall, for other meetings that are taking place there, bathrooms, public areas of the building can be combined, and as I said, mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems of the building, all in one. This combination of the two, we believe, is approximately a $1 million savings versus building two new facilities in two separate projects. So, that is the main layout of the building and the main sort of configuration on the site. And I don't know, Eric, is there anything you want me to go over?
Unless there's more spaces, I think we open it up and we let the questions come and we try to answer the questions.
Sure. I know the budget isn't presented here, it is on a handout that we have, some of you have that already. It's a $12 million project that's being proposed currently. So, I guess we'll turn it over to questions and get started.
Where are you gonna put all the snow?
So, obviously, we're at the initial stages of the project, and we are going what's, through what's called a feasibility study or an early conceptual design study. There is still at least six months' worth of detailed design work that's going to happen on this project. So, a lot of things like figuring out the nuts and bolts and the details are yet to come. I have a lot of experience designing these facilities. We have an OPM on the project who also has a lot of experience working on these facilities. So, we feel confident, sitting here today, that all of those issues will be solved by that point. I could sit here and point out where I think it's gonna go, but I can tell you right now, we haven't decided exactly where all the snow is going to go. It's a tight site on this area of the building, but there's certainly areas where snow could go.
Jeff, this is right, you live right here?
Yep.
Yeah. So, it's not gonna go in your yard.
It has been before, just for reference.
Yeah. But that's, that's, the intent of this is to create a new facility here that's going to be designed with modern building practices and standards. So, you know, there's, there's going to be a planting buffer along this side of the site, and there's no way that we would design this project with the intention being that snow storage would be on that side. In fact, we'd have, we have to go through a regulatory process with the town to go through a site plan review, and that'll be part of that. So, they're gonna wanna know where snow storage is going to be going, and that process will happen in the future. So, that piece will be taken care of, and it will be, you know, out in the public view when it, when it is discussed, because we'll be at a public here.
Okay, that was question one. So, if you notice out the window there, there's a pretty good grade from High Road down to the, where we're in this building. And there's, when it rains hard or if the snow is nothing, there's a tremendous water flow going down the hill, and it puddles into a small lake there in that little mitch.
Right in there?
Which is right on the other side of the wall of the stream. Yeah, exactly, right in there. And that attempts to run down to the pond.
Yeah. So, all this is wet back here, you know, it's basically wet. And then there's the actual wetlands where we've got delineated wetlands back in the back here. So, drainage from this area is gonna be taken care of as part of the project. I'm assuming.
As Jeff said, this still has to go for the conservation, the town's conservation commission, and the planning board will get a look at it through standard, any kind of building project in town. If, you know, those issues brought up should be addressed with a project that is, you know, we have a chance to improve things, they should be improved.
Yeah. Now, and it's not just a matter of improving it, we have to comply with the state's storm warning management guidelines. It's a requirement as part of a new building. So, there's no way that we're gonna be able to get away with a project that's kind of, you know, it's good enough, we're just gonna fix it up. We have to comply with this. When we go through conservation and planning, that's gonna be a requirement. So, I don't think you should be concerned, the state is already putting in these guidelines for this very reason.
And then where are the HBA systems for the building?
Again, I have no idea at this point, but if I were to guess, I'm gonna say we're probably gonna be using the attic space. This, this area of the building here is gonna have gabled roof ends, but then this area in the front is either gonna be a low slope or slightly sloped pitched roof. And that's actually designed, it's not shown on the plans, but it's designed for storage, about 3,000, 4,000 square feet of storage space. The elevator will go up there, the stair will go up there, so the town gets some additional storage in the attic. But we are gonna use a chunk of that space for air handling systems for the building. And we'll probably end up with, you know, louverage on the top of the building that will take in and exhaust air from those systems. But those systems will be inside the building, so a lot of the noise that could be present from a rooftop unit won't be as present.
And emergency generators, where will they have?
There'll definitely be emergency generator on the site. I don't know where we're gonna put one yet. I mean, there's spots around the building that it could go. Typically, in these types of scenarios where it's so close to residential neighborhood, we'll be specifying all of the acoustic treatments that you can get for emergency generators. They have a acoustic package, essentially a little enclosure with a muffler system. It's still an emergency generator, but the police station has to have one. You can't, that building can't go down. So, we're gonna do as much as we can to mitigate that, but there will be, there will be emergency generator here.
All right. And lastly, you mentioned the police are gonna have some parking somewhere here, I assume that.
Yeah, out of those spots, some of them will be.
They like to have their cars running perpetually for some reason out front of this building or actually town hall. That can be really annoying if they're pointing at me.
Sure.
So, this, in terms of layout, as Jeff said, it hasn't quite been decided, but the public parking on this side, overflow parking here, there may need to be some employee parking in the far parking lot. But in terms of the spaces, with this being hatched off, there is a garage space and the Sally Port, and entrance into the police station for, for the policemen themselves is all down located at this area.
That's where I guess they'd probably park the cruisers. Operationally, because of the way that police operate, at times, that's, that's just the right way to do it, because you're in the middle of the winter and you can't leave the car getting iced over. But I understand the annoyance, I would be too.
And exhaust, and then we got the headlights pointing at the house.
Yeah. And I think in this case, that because of the way it's configured here, that the headlights probably won't be pointing at anybody. They'll be, they'd be pointing at the fire station or the police station. Two places that it probably doesn't matter.
I guess we'll continue to follow. Is there a next question?
Well, I'll conduct you to mine right now, because following up on the concerns of the screening and the drainage, I see no place on this plan that has any space for any screening.
Remember, it's a conceptual plan. We haven't gotten into detailed design yet. I can't tell you.
I'm just looking at space.
I can't tell you exactly whether or not that's gonna be three feet, five feet, what, how much bufferage there's gonna be there. I can't say exactly, is this building gonna be one or two feet longer or shorter? We're in concept stage now, can tell you basically what it looks like, basically what it, the square footage of the building is, and what it's gonna cost, and generally how it's gonna be laid out. But there's six months more of detailed design work that they will answer and get to all of their issues.
And then on the other side, there's a significant grade change on, on the, I don't see any north arrow on the, is that the east side?
Yeah. East is generally this direction.
Is there a significant grade rise there?
There is, because you have a little butter right there too.
Pardon?
Is there a butter right on that side?
Well, yeah, I know that, I know that.
There's a little bit of a grade here, but of course, parking lots.
Is that gonna require retaining wall or?
I, I don't, I, I don't have a problem with, with saying that this parking lot's gonna be able to be accomplished within the budget that we have, but I, because I think that encompasses things like that, but I don't have the ability to design to that level of detail at this stage. It's just inefficient with the town's resources to, to go through and do an entire detailed design.
You did scale this off when you drew this?
Oh, it's scaled. And I can tell you exactly what the dimensions are, but what I'm saying is that. This may, this may change in the detailed design, it may get slightly changed. And that will allow for things like retaining walls and buffering zones, fencing. We haven't shown utilities, topographic information, there's a lot that is gonna have to happen. That's why there's six months' worth of design work.
And then with regards to drainage, where does this area drain to now? I mean, you, you've got, it looks to me, you've got about 75 to 80% impervious surface there.
There's no question we're gonna be increasing the impervious area of this site, and it's likely we may increase it here, but that's a little.
Where does it drain to?
There's a drain line in the street, Morgan Ave.
Where does that go?
Right behind the parking lot.
Oh, is it the park?
The big part on the right, it goes into a west red oak back there.
And where, and where does the pond drain?
You know, or, yeah. So, the, the other thing that we have to do as part of this project, as I mentioned earlier, there'll be storm warning management requirement. So, with that requirement, we're gonna actually have to infiltrate, you know, big infiltration basins under this parking lot, more than likely, under the parking lot, that would allow it to percolate down. And so the burden on the town's infrastructure that's there would be.
It's not gonna percolate, because that's all farmer swamp, filled swamp, it's not gonna percolate. That's saturated land there.
These are all great points, Fred, and they're not all answered today. As you know, it's a process, somehow we gotta get beyond concept, we've gotta get approved, and if, the questions that you ask are questions that can ask for any project, no matter what goes on on Morgan Ave. So, they're not specific to this concept.
We also, we don't even know.
Jeff, you had mentioned that you're working at a $12 million project here by combining the buildings, and that you would save a, a million dollars from building a new police station and a new town hall, but I don't recall anybody ever mentioning building a new town hall that was just gonna remodel the existing one. Or is that?
I'll turn it over to Eric, because I think that remodeling the town hall's been looked at a number of times.
Right. So, we have looked at remodeling the town hall, and then as the building committee advanced projects and we were asked to look at a separate police station, we still had a combined, and we compared that to a combined new, new town hall. So, that the idea of a new town hall and a new police station on town hall site isn't, this isn't the first time, the previous committees came up with that proposal, and at that time, we thought we were gonna save a little bit more money, I guess a little less because of escalation. So, in terms of the town hall, it is an existing building, we did think that we only needed to add 1,400 square feet to it. But they, in terms of the newer program and the layout of that program, because now that we have a, an architect and we can lay it out, that it actually needs to be, the reconfiguring wouldn't be as economical as, as building a new layout for it. Downstairs has about eight feet of floor to ceiling, and so as we improved it and renovated, I mean, it's an old building that, that didn't have modern day equipment in it, and it has smaller sort of residential size equipment in it. As we bring it up to date, we need to bring electrical and mechanical up to date, but also in the current condition, has one side with a couple light wells around the side. And as we've, as the building committee's been involved in this project, we've gone from a police station that had sewer backup issues to connecting the sewer, the town hall already had water, to improving that, having the town hall people move out, and so the basement has minimal use now. I think it's just in terms of its existing configuration, and because of the police department was in there, we never really fully got in there to, to assess it. And when, and now that we're at that point of assessing it, we just don't think that the dollars are gonna be well spent renovating this existing building back into the spaces that it needs to be for the, for the uses that need to go there.
Because the, the police department's situated in there now, it's just they're, they don't have the Sally Port and the lockups and.
They don't have the Sally Port, right. They're, they have cells down there, but they can't use them, they're basically just storage rooms.
Right.
So, the dispatch is brought upstairs, the offices are brought upstairs, there's, I guess they're probably still using locker rooms, and there's a small mechanical room that's being re, being used at, at the mall.
Because on the, the first study that you have on here, you're showing quite an addition on the back of the town hall, when it was the town hall, I was just wondering, why couldn't you keep the police department where they are and just put that addition on the back and put your Sally Port and your lockups and the elevator, two, make a two-story addition on the back of the existing building to keep the existing building there? They're already in there operating, and you spent a lot of money to move them into there. It's just, you know, there may be another option here.
I, I think the, the idea of renovating it in terms of the long run of a building that needs continuous maintenance to building a newer building, and especially for the police station remaining in there, there'd be quite a bit of overhaul. The police station also is an upgraded use occupancy in the building code and requires additional building features than normal other buildings like a residence or even the town hall or a bank wouldn't require. So, in terms of going through that and renovating a building from our mass estimates that we have, it just seems like it, it wasn't the best value for the dog.
Yeah. There was also a space issue too, because even if you were to take that footprint that's shown on that original and just say, town hall's first floor, police station's lower level, kind of similar to the concept that's here, but just renovate it, it's not as much space. So, there'd be a, a loss of space for both the town hall and the police, in addition to what Eric was saying, to do that.
I think we all agree that, and has been every plan in the building committee, is to keep the face of the town hall on High Road. Nobody wants to lose that. And in terms of the option, nobody wants to put the police station as the front door or the, the front on High Road, and the police station even for town in back, or the police station over there with the town hall up here. So, there is, design-wise, the concept and great importance to keeping the town hall in that location.
I, I don't really understand why that is. If you maybe.
Or what?
Some more to that. Like, for example, it, I'm sorry, my, did I talk to you?
No, I can ask her that.
Okay. I mean, at first, I wanna thank everybody for all the work that they're doing, I know how hard it is for a committee to put together a report and then have people question it. So, thank you. But what I'm hearing and reading people's letters and so on to, to the paper, is people saying, you really gotta start thinking outside the box. And so, based on what you just said, one thought, and I've actually thought of this before, I don't know why, why it has to be on High Road. Why can't it, for example, be at the old Holistic Family Practice Building, which has elevators and has handicap parking, and it has all kinds of thick space that you could modify?
That building is in very rough shape. We toured it about a year ago, I toured it with selectmen there.
Yeah.
It's in rough shape, really?
Yes, if you walk around it, exterior and interior, it needs a, a full redo. They're old exam rooms, and I don't wanna dump on the building, but I wouldn't expect anybody to move into one of those rooms.
It's not, it's not a residence, it's a building set up for medical practice. And so after their tour, Martha, the town planner, myself, and Damon took a tour, walked around, and it is, it's, there's a tremendous amount of renovation in that. That building functioned very well for what it did. And it was added on to over time to expand its use. Every room has a counter and a sink, and, and it's, it's like doctor's office house. I mean, that was the quaintness and the charm and, and the ability to run it that way. But it is not in great shape.
No kidding? That's, I mean, I suspect many people here went to Holistic for many, many years.
So, the second answer to that. So, the, the second answer to that is, in terms of Newbury, in terms of our historic tradition, we're going to be four hundred years old in, help me with the math, seventeen years or something like that? It's coming up. It's coming up, four hundred years old, we have something that nobody, a lot of other people don't have across the entire country, and that's our historic roots. And our historic roots in New England date back to setting up a town green, having houses around that town green, having that town green for multiple functions and purposes of, you know, feeding your, your cattle and then gathering. And as you drive through New England towns, you come across the village green and you know you've hit the center of town. And hopefully, or usually, there's a church or there's a town hall or a fire station that has a name on it, and you know where you are. And you can drive through New England and find where you are just by looking at the civic building in that town located at the, at the green. We in Newbury have two greens, we have a lower green and we have an upper green, just as Newbury Port has the Mall, which was their green. So there's, planning-wise, historic-wise, there's, and sense of village and community, there's great importance of the town hall on the village green. Understanding that, that the town hall originally wasn't there, and originally the settling place wasn't here, it was down at the lower green, but the lower green was set adjacent to the lots that were laid out for people that stepped off the boat and said, okay, here we are, this is how we're going to start things, and these are the plots, and here's our village green, and here's our, our organizing factor for getting, for starting our community. And so we're trying to build and keep to tradition of New England by keeping that town hall there. And we think that if we do, we know that if we do a nice building, and it certainly says Newbury Town Hall on it, that people driving through will, you know, that will be one of the images that they see and take away of our town. And we should build something that we're all very proud of.
So along those lines, and again, I'm getting a sense of the history based on what people have been saying, you mentioned earlier that, that the old school had been considered and rejected, why? If, if it was so important to have something of good reason?
Hey, may I? Okay, you're talking the Woodbridge School?
Yeah.
Okay, when I was first elected in old four, Dick Joy and myself got together and decided, let's do something with that, put a town hall in that. So we put a proposal together, we had John Collins, the engineer, we had Bill Sally as the architect, we had Will Lojek as the contractor. We had a plan put together to buy it for a dollar, this was before procurement law now, we'd buy it for a dollar, the contractor would turn it into town offices and lease it back to us for twenty years for point two point three million dollars. They laughed me off the town floor, that's insane. Put the building up this hell, it was, I put, I put it together, nice proposal, didn't work, that's why.
There's lots of, of history, and if you'd like, I can explain a little bit more history after this, because I don't think everyone here wants to hear it again. But, you know, it was back in two thousand and six, it was listed in the town master plan, the town is required by state law to produce a master plan every so often. And in two thousand and six, it says right in there, most important project in town, police station. So we've been discussing this since two thousand and six, it's been an issue identified since two thousand and one. And, you know, we live in a small community, the great thing about our community is that we have an annual town meeting, that we have selectmen that are actually residents, you know, of our town, and that people get to come and say what they want, when they want, and we're very personal about it. And sometimes that personability has detracted from the progress or interest of the greater good, at least that's my opinion, being on the board and presenting multiple projects a lot, which I feel were, were great, and we seem to have to keep yandering and moving. What, you have another question, Mark?
I'd just like to echo some of what this, you mentioned about the thanks that, that need to be shared with the Board of Selectmen. The municipal building committee, all of its work, certainly the OPM and, and the architects to get us to, to this point in time, so thank you all. You know, it dawned on me, as I was thinking about coming here today, that this is really about doing the right thing versus the easy thing. And the easiest thing would have been for this Board of Selectmen and this town administration to say, let's move forward for anywhere between six point five and eight point five and hope for the best. We'll keep our fingers and toes crossed, we'll spend as much as we have to and get it as far as they can get us. But they didn't do that, they took a good, long, hard look at that six point five million, they realized then that the eight point five million wasn't going to suit the town's needs, short term or long term. And so they come back before the residents, maybe swallowing some pride, maybe admitting a mistake. And that's not the easiest thing in the world to do if you're, if you're a member of town government, right? Nobody wants to admit they made a mistake. We can dwell on the mistake of six point five, or we can move forward, and I would suggest we move forward. I'd just like to broaden the conversation a little bit, because it seems like everything is focused on the building, and I understand why that is. I, I like to focus on other things, like, and again, I mentioned this the other night at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, I'm not sure what the number is. I'm guessing that, you know, we could all wake up one morning and it's fifteen, twenty years from now, and we're still renting on Kent Way. And we've now put probably, help me with this, six million dollars into the town's money into renting, three hundred thousand dollars a year, times twenty years, and that rent is escalating every year, every two years, I'm sure. So what is this town going to, going to take out of its operating budget over the next twenty years to rent without any, any form of equity? Six million, seven million, eight million dollars, are you happy with that? And I'm also concerned about my home value. This was a great town when I, when I bought my house forty-two years ago, it's a great town now. But as a layperson, it would seem to me that in part, not in total, but in part, my house's value, just like everybody else's house's value in this town, is based in some way, shape, or form on the sense of community we have, the facilities we have, the public safety we have. And that includes police, that includes fire, that includes town administration. So I say to myself, with this debt exclusion override, and with hopefully some of the funding that might come from other sources, and maybe bring it down to two hundred and ten to two hundred and forty dollars a year. So over twenty-eight years, I'm spending about maybe six thousand dollars, give or take, in additional taxes. And I've got to believe that my home's value is going to be increased by at least that much, if not a lot more hopefully, by having the kind of facilities that new people, young people want to come to and have their kids safe going to school. So I'm willing to bet the two hundred and forty dollars a year on taxes against a home value that ten, twenty, thirty years from now is going to be worth a lot more than that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My question is a lot less, my comments will be a lot less eloquent, but my question refers to research and comparison, maybe to other places. I regularly go on one thirty-three through that part of Rowley. I really don't know the difference in population between the two towns, but Rowley, like us, has quite a, quite a bit of geography. So it's, there's some similarities, I wonder, has the committee or the architects, have, have you noticed? You really can't miss it, just over Route One, on the right-hand side is a whole big complex, a huge complex, it seems, for the town of Rowley. Did you, do you regularly, or have you talked to them?
Yes, yes.
Compared? That's what I want to know.
Earlier in the process, several years ago, they went before the town to ask, request funding to hire the OPM and the architect, to bring them on board to get a design that could be more advanced and presented to the people before a budget was presented and, and agreed to. That failed, you know, everyone could see, why do we, why do we have to hire them now, let's figure out what we're going to do, come up with a budget, then we'll decide on the budget, and then we were just totally focused on that number. As part of that, I reached out to Jeff three and a half years ago, just by looking on the web and finding out who are the architects that we might hire, who are the people that do municipal projects. CSS Architects, who we hired out of Wakefield, provided a number of projects that they had worked on. Jeff provided a number of projects he worked on. Dedalus Associates was one of the people that was bidding for the job that didn't get it, that Kevin had, provided some information, and we did show that in past meetings of, here are about twenty projects, here's the population of those towns, here's the size of facility they're building. And like Salisbury, there are some asterisks in terms of the size of their eighteen thousand square foot facility, and you understand that in terms of what they need for services with the beach and the rise in their population in the summer. Then we came back to Newbury and tried to explain that Newbury has, we have three schools, I mean, we have, you know, we have our elementary school, we have the Triton High School, which is a regional school that brings students in, and we have Governor's School. So we have more, we have three separate facilities of schools, so that was taken into account for. And of those, we looked at population, there's six thousand, six hundred sentences, consent, two thousand and ten sentences, six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six. I think people think it's slightly less than that, but around six thousand. So we looked at stations, and at stations, the, the minimum number being built was somewhere around seven. Eight, nine, ten were average, and then depending on, you know, if you're in Framingham, you're building twenty-three thousand square feet. Then there were other projects that combined facilities. So we did look at those numbers, I have them, I have them in my bag, I brought half my box with me to pull out anything, if I can find it again. But there are comparisons to other towns. And I'm sure, Kevin, we could ask you to find a few more, and Jeff, you could bring one, you did bring a few more forward, to try to put our town, our town size and what other, other municipalities are doing. We've talked to Merrimack, we've talked to Salisbury, we've talked to Rowley, everybody's got some, you know, they're, they have a slightly different complex that's going on there.
Thank you, I think you've set a lot of homeworks.
Right again?
Okay, back to the nice lady here, is that you? Why are you talking about, talking about the, the holistic building? And I would agree with you that the building is probably not suitable. The site, however, is, and her point was, and it's more central, Newbury has a unique situation. We have, we used to have two towns, we had Old Town and we had Vifir, and believe me, never the two met. Now we have three towns, because Plum Island has a lot of year-round residents on it, and we have Old Town and we have Vifir. It would be great if we had the town hall in the center of things, which would be on Route One, and it would tend to unite this town, which it has really never been united in my lifetime, anyway, that's almost seventy-six years. That would be the site. This site here, you've got a behemoth of a building on a postage-stamped lot that is just overpowering everything, overpowering the area. And it's just too much for the site. That site out there is much larger, it would take this size building much better, and it would reunite the town.
Center of town, taking the town and putting it on a map and drawing an X through it, it was exactly next to the transfer station, right next to, next to the transfer, where Boston Road and Hay Street come together. We did look at that, it didn't per.
That one, so.
We could sit down, Fred, and we could go back over October twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen, the library presentation, where we went through all the sites and we finally determined that the benefit of site, site costs, site improvement costs, site location costs, all came back to Morgan Ave. And I think a lot of people, you know, people clapped and people were all happy and people hugging each other, and I think even you said this is a great idea.
No, I did not.
All right, so I'm going to go back and watch, watch the tape. But we have done that study, and we did look around, and we look at other sites, just as people would say, well, how could you, how could you put the police in temporary facilities for seven hundred thousand dollars? Well, what's the, what's that property going to cost us? What's the next property going to cost us? Governors was a great idea because they were going to donate a site to us, but in order to get any, any sewer and water back to their water and sewer treatment plant, meant digging up Route One for quarter of a mile through ledge, which you could see as you drive by.
No, no, no comment there.
So that great idea fell flat, and it, you know, it was a good idea, and Governors offered it up. You know, the Woodbridge School, it came and went, that was a great idea. The, the town forest, we actually got the DPW and the Health Department to go out there and dig several test pits, that failed. And the, and you cannot take, and then everyone's like, oh, put a tight tank on it, do this, it's like, stop, this is a public municipal building, we have rules and regulations from the government, and standards we got to, we have to follow. So we did look at that, we looked at JRM recycling site.
Yeah, we blew that opportunity, yeah.
And we blew that opportunity again too. So I think we can go over site selection, I think, as I said, there is, you know, the historic precedent of having a town here isn't all that old, because it's not in a truly historic building, but it is in a historic site, in a historic, naturally historic, help me out here, zone.
Setting?
Set, the town. Mr. Walker?
Eric, you're absolutely right in what you said about site selection, and site selection was a very long, arduous process. But one of the things that was emphasized, and one of the things that, as far as Morgan Ave become a location, was the ability to hook up to municipal and sewer and water. And we now have it, and that's one of the reasons that, you know, this site became our main locus of emphasizing municipal law. Everything, everything you said was true, but I think you really got to emphasize the fact that we have municipal.
The town hall had water, and it needed sewer, and the sewer was just up the street in a relatively short distance. And by bringing the sewer and the water to the town hall, we knew that we could eventually extend it a short distance and connect it to the fire station, of which was still had issues in terms of being a separate one. But the thought process there of extending it was, was good forward thinking.
When you're, when you're dealing with municipal buildings and trying to vision forward for fifty years, sometimes having water and sewer is incredibly important, and for me, when you start to put millions of dollars into older buildings, it gets hard too.
Well, part of the, the, some of the site where it's currently raised, between the parking on one side and the parking right out front, is where the septic was. And so that was a limiting factor in terms of parking and maneuverability across that site, and locations of where we might have put an addition. As we're gone through this process, everyone has to remember that there were several other processes and things working themselves out. This is not exactly like the linear process where we started here and we had one good idea after the next, and we ended up here, and we've, we've kind of gone around in circles. The Public Safety Complex Committee that originally was charged to look at a fire station, police station for twelve million dollars was the start of everybody questioning and, and fathoming, how, how could, how could it cost twelve million dollars? And I think most people were taking residential house costs and size and not relating that to, to commercial construction costs. But, you know, that project as first presented somewhere around two thousand and fourteen was a twelve million dollar project, and here we are, right back again with a solution for combining facilities, approximately that amount.
Right, raise the issue of aesthetic concerns, and I actually share them, though I know that aesthetics is in the eye of the beholder. But it does seem to me that a, you know, two-story plus attic space structure doesn't fit the characteristics that I think we want. But my comment is really about something else, I'm not going to support the twelve million dollar project, just to be clear about that. But it seems to me that, though I can go through some of the issues I have with that, I think we need to ask ourselves as well, what are we going to do if we fail a town hall meeting or at the ballot box? I think there's a great likelihood that the twelve million will be voted down, but maybe it won't, but if it is, what are we going to do? And I would argue that would bring us back to maybe a ten thousand square foot police station on the lot back here, which could be built within the six point four million, and then with the money left over, not enough to do the whole thing, but begin to renovate town hall. It's an old building, as Jeff has pointed out, it has problems, but we can get the police station built, then we'd see what we had left over, then come back to the people, and I think would support an additional, more well-defined number than what we're seeing right now. But again, my key point's going to be, what are we going to do if the twelve million dollar project gets voted down? And I don't expect you to answer that, but I hope we're all thinking about that.
So excuse me, last, my last minute question, my last minute answer, but, you know, the building pro, building committees, committees, multiple committees, have a dozen projects to bring out, it's not up for the building committee. It's not up for the building committee to decide which project gets put before. So, you know, we've looked at a tremendous amount of things. There are a tremendous amount of options. And the question is, why is this, is this the best option, really? And for reasoning, you know, selectmen have seen all these options. A lot of town people voted on various options and various parts of options to get us there. I, I think the idea of building or solving the most that we can now in today's dollars is better than pushing things down the road to tomorrow's dollars. Combining, um, I mean, no offense to these guys, but the task of, of setting up the work just to hire these guys and creating the documentation and the proposal and the organization to do that took, um, six months longer than planned. It was a fair amount of work. We put things in shape, but certainly the next project could just pick them up, rehash them, edit them a little bit, move forward a lot quicker. That took us some time. So it's just the amount of effort it takes. And then, you know, there is the public construction process. We have to go out for a public bid, and it's, um, you know, it has many benefits, it has some detractions, and, you know, that's not for us to debate here, but it has a certain cost to it. It certainly is not as efficient as hiring or going for your own bidding process where you're inviting contractors and bidding them out and, um, managing the state and the way the state does it, and the way the state wants to open it up to multiple people, and then can take the subcontractors and pair them with a contractor, has risk inherent in it, risk drives up price, and there's, the reward is that multiple firms that might not have had the opportunity to do municipal work are now open to be able to do that. That's the reward. The risk is now you're pairing people that don't normally work together in an industry that's super high with risk, and therefore it drives up cost. So doing multiple projects and saying, "We're just gonna do the next one and do the, do the next one," I think, you know, my effort to stand up here is getting limited to do it, and, you know, to keep thinking that we wanna keep solving the problem by, by putting it down the road, we're down the road. So that's, that's, that's my answer. I think the selectmen could give you an answer as to how they feel. Go on to the next question.
I'd just like to tag on to what he said, though. I live out on Plum Island. Most of us, I think, voted for the library, but we don't use it. It's nowhere near us, we don't use it. So that's, okay, whatever that was, sixty dollars a year, whatever, it was worth it from my perspective. And then we added water and sewer, and so everybody who lives out on the island, except for people who just recently arrived, you know, is paying over twenty thousand dollars a year for the betterment. So we've already got that tacked on, and that's not insignificant. And then, now we're talking about another two hundred and fifty or whatever a year. I think you really have to plan for Plan B here, because I think a lot of people, I mean, I understand this, I appreciate it, I'm leaning towards supporting it, but I don't anticipate that you're gonna get to support the people of Plum Island.
It, it's, it's tough. It's tough standing up here and keep putting another project out there, but at a certain point, you're not gonna be up here representing a project that's not going to meet the needs. And if you're gonna present it, I found a, um, a quote from an old architectural historian that basically said, "Be careful what you choose in cost, because if you choose the lowest cost, you're gonna build something, and you're gonna open the door, and then everyone's gonna turn around and try to look at somebody and say, 'Well, this is useless. We don't even have a meeting space, we don't even have, why did we cut that out? Why didn't we do that? It would've been short money just then.'" So we have been thinking like that, and to get to that point, we're trying not to, or we are presenting what we feel is the minimum working solution for that. The town had to condemn their own DPW barn and, and pull the trucks out and put our employees out on the, uh, front pavement to figure out how to solve that solution. They had trucks so old that the axles were falling off them in the street before we decided to fix them. So, you know, we had trailers, temporary trailers, temporary trailers for eleven years was a temporary solution. They had to be condemned because of mold issues in the trailers. That, that's the process that we've been dragging out and going through.
Can I speak to that for a second? So the town has a basic need. It needs a police, a police station, and it needs a town hall. Currently, we own land that has public sewer and, and public water. We don't have to purchase a building, we don't have to retrofit a building. Do we have, we have to pay prevailing wage, so no matter which way we go, whether we go with a brand-new building or we renovate, we're still gonna pay prevailing wage. I personally cannot justify, or vote, to throwing taxpayer dollars, mine included, on a project that is not going to meet the needs of the, the town and will have to do it again. That's, that's wasteful. That's what happened in Rowley. They had a police station that was sinking, and now they had to do it again. I believe that this project as presented to us is not too big and it's not too small. If, if, and I have to say this in retrospect, because I, I personally, well, I wasn't on the board then, but I did vote for the twelve million dollar municipal building, because I felt as if it solved the most needs of the town back in twenty-twelve, which would have addressed this building here, which is sinking. It has a wall that's going down, the fire trucks cannot fit in the firehouse, um, the, the guys and, and the way that, 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 there's no sleeping quarters here, it's not, I mean, we're not at the point where we're even healthy for our, some of our people. This is a debt exclusion override, so the, the, your tax dollars are not going to increase. It's not a two, two and a half. So it will, once the town pays off debt, this will go away. There's a chance, and there's a good chance, that the governor, um, will, has put money in his bond bill to help us pay for this, this project. I just, I, when we were elected to help the town move forward, and to have a town, and I totally understand how, where you are on Plum Island, because you did get stuck with that whole system, and it wasn't what you thought it was going to be or what it should have been either. So you got the, almost the double whammy up there. But to not move forward, to keep the town the way it is, and not have a police station, and to continue to rent space is not the best use of taxpayer money. And we need to move the town forward. Is, will it pass? Like Steve says, there's a, there's a chance that it won't, it won't pass. But that doesn't mean the need goes away. We still won't have a police station, we'll still have a condemned, a condemned building. The Massachusetts Department of Public Health came up here and looked at that building, and there were sewer flies in there, there was mold, there was, there were ocean violations all over it. We can't go back to that building. It's gotta almost be erased and start over again. So combining-
About the town hall?
The town hall. Combining the two spaces, the two needs is the best use of dollars today, but that still doesn't address this building. So there's still gonna be something else coming down. So if we build a police station and just build a police station, we're gonna have to eventually build a fight, build a, uh, a town hall, and then maybe ten, fifteen years from now, address this building. But to do it that way over time, there's the time value of money, and it's gonna cost more to kick it out than, uh, bite it off now. We have the, we have the, um, the town library has come off our debt. We have the town of Newbury Elementary School has come off our debt. What else, Tracy, from the debt recently?
There was some land purchases and space.
Open spose, that, that's coming off, so we, we're not debt-ridden right now. So now is a good time for us to actually incur another mortgage, so to, so to speak. And then in twenty-eight years, it'll get paid off. And then, and this will have to be addressed at some, at some point. But, I mean, unfortunately, the need, the need is there. Could I ask?
Back to Mark.
Just real quick, I, I know nothing about architecture, I know nothing about building planning, but it, it's, based, but all the research you've done, and I think it's outstanding. I think you've been able to, you know, answer every legitimate question that's been asked in triplicate. I, I can't imagine a town having had a more thorough, uh, full process than what we've gone through here with all these different iterations. So again, thank you. But correct me if I'm wrong, you know, someone talked about, "Well, build a police station for six-five and then what's ever left over, stop." You can't get a police station built for six-five today, given, in terms of what the police chief says his needs are. So if you're talking about building a police station now and adding to that the cost of renovating, you know, a building that everyone has always, already described as a non-functional building, and it's, you know, you, you know, lipstick on the, on the pig, as they say. So, you know, you add all those costs together, the cost of those two projects, given the fact that it's four or five years in completion, is probably gonna be eleven, twelve million dollars. And for the same eleven, twelve million dollars, you can get shiny and new. It just makes no sense to, to think about a Plan B.
Jeff, this lady had a question, if you don't mind.
I just, um, I heard, um, someone say the rent was three hundred thousand, which I understand is a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Well, it was. Eric?
Okay, so-
Sorry, I don't want to continue, I thought you were done.
Uh, no, believe me. I, no, I just have a, um, question regarding, uh, using, um, building a police station for six point five, which I understood can be done, I may be wrong, and continuing to rent, um, the town hall, the maintenance whatsoever there is just the rent, and allowing breathing space for some of the elderly that would like to remain in town.
What are we gonna, what's the direct, I guess, sorry, I didn't quite follow the question exactly.
Well, no, the question, uh, the first question was answered, it is only a hundred and seventy-five thousand, and the other was a comment.
I could speak to that comment. We keep having this thrown in our faces that we're driving the elderly out of town, but I've spent some time with the principal assessor and Tracy and we've talked about this at length. There, if someone is over seventy, they can go to the principal assessor and request to not pay property taxes ever again in town.
Based on the financial need, right?
Based on their financial need. So if someone is at that point, they can defer their taxes until their land sells, either when they leave town voluntarily or in a box. There is no driving people out with these taxes. That's not the goal, that's not the aim, and it's not the reality. So I'm kinda tired of it being thrown at us.
Well, I'm sorry you're tired, um, just listen, but the fact remains that that is not true.
Have you gone, who, we have programs to allow people not to pay their taxes, so if the increase in taxes is the issue-
They have to be a certain income, correct?
Correct.
And they have to pay back the town someday. So you're taking away whatever they wanted to leave their children.
There are ways for them to avoid the taxes. We all have to make budgetary choices.
There are, there are ways, but you have to be, um, poor to do it.
For those people who don't have, you can get on that program. And that amount, those dollars are lost in taxes, how do you make it up?
At the sale of the property, that's when it's removed.
Sure. I can still think, I mean, still, well, I know that, but I mean, but your, the taxes, don't they, our taxes, um, are what basically run the government and-
Our taxes-
So if you're not bringing the, getting the income at, at that time, how does that get made up? As far as running-
Tracy will answer the question, but before that, yes, so, you know, someone that isn't paying their taxes, it's asking them to pay for it because they're hurting all of us, and the town pays over, is it over sixty percent for education in terms of the total budget?
Almost sixty percent.
Almost sixty percent for education goes to education. So if you're in town and you don't have kids, if you're in town and you have kids, and you're older and you don't have kids, we're all paying for education, and we're paying a lot for it. The next, um, department is the police station, and the next highest department is the employees at town hall. And everybody else after that isn't even on the, it's just an asterisk at the bottom of the budget for, um, employees or outside, uh, employees. And so providing, I mean, that's, that's where this started, is the need to provide facilities, the need to provide the right facilities. And if we have a conversation about what we need to provide and what we're providing and, you know, making sure that we're not providing too much, making sure we're not providing too little, and this is what we're providing, then we have a cost for it. We don't like the cost, and we're asking only to build partially what we need and not all what we need. And so through our process and through these multiple projects, and I spoke in America before, uh, you know, a little shame on me, but I went through and made a hundred different options, every, every viable way, and every option had a different price, and when they had a different price, they also had a different program to them. I wasn't doing any magic by lowering the number and saying, "We could build all this for that number." I was saying, "You could probably build a police station standalone over there, and what is left over could go to town hall." And really, what was left over was, you know, a coat of paint and maybe an improvement to the mechanical system. So we weren't solving all the facility needs with that six point five, and I'm sorry that I didn't make that clear, but at the end of that whole process, recycling through it, I just didn't make it clear. So the point of coming around and why are we here today, and why is this the plan, is the point of having the, the right spaces to serve the needs. And I spoke up before about this, um, I'll redo the numbers, today's numbers, to make it correct. But when you build a building, it costs about ten percent of the total use cost of that building. To maintain that building is probably another twenty or thirty percent. The biggest expense, actually, it's not even twenty, it's three, two or three percent to, to maintain it. The busy, big expense of the life cycle cost of a building is the employees in the building. And so if you can improve the production of the people in the building by one percent, which is over ninety percent of the cost of the entire life cycle cost of building compared to the minimal cost of building, you'll get a tremendous amount of efficiency out of it. And this, this idea of planning and efficiency goes to, to, um, all academic projects, and I'm sure in terms of what Jeff is trying to do and to plan runs up to, Bob Connors has brought this up, with his, his projects of thinking a little differently, trying to not just take old spaces that were once an office that were three hundred square feet and saying, "We're not doing that. You, you're gonna get a smaller office, and the two, the three of you are gonna combine and share one conference room." We're not even gonna give the report people an office to go sit in anymore and have chairs that they can go sit at. We're gonna give them a bench or a countertop and a corridor in order to do that. We're trying to move forward in thinking new ways to minimize the program, and we feel that this is the minimum program. And the process that we went through previously came up with similar numbers to what was presented here, and the process, again, proved out that when you ask somebody and they say, "What do you want? What do you really want? What do you think you really, really want?" The program was, they asked for a lot, and we then took that, to repeat myself here, we selected a budget, and we tried to fit it all back into a budget, and we found that there's certain things that were needed that just didn't fit in that lower-cost budget. So we added those back, and that, 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 this is the result of that project. This program, this site plan, a result of that process to prove out what's the minimum need. I don't know, Tracy, if you remember to answer the question on taxes, but taxes come down to services, and, you know, you have to, you have to pay for your services. And in some way, we're fortunate in town to not have water and sewer, to have what we have, to have our historic town, to have open space, to have a lot of open space that's either agricultural, that's paying a lower tax dollar, come right, not creating taxes and assessments, but, um, and we have a lot of space for, um, you know, a lot of acres that are dedicated or controlled by wildlife. And we all share the advantage of that, and we all share the, the burden of that.
What's the burden of it?
The burden is less taxes, less commercial. We could be rallied-
Less taxes, less, less, less demand for services. They don't demand any services.
Yeah, but if you had that commercial base, it would be, uh, lessening our school taxes, and therefore we'd have more money.
Never works out.
Well, you, we, we're not here to argue taxes, honestly, I won't, presented anymore. I think Jeff had a question.
I would like to definitely say, I agree with this project. I've been at this a long time. I'm one of the people, I was chair when Eric and I kind of put together what we-
I'm one of the people, I was chair when Eric and I kind of put together what we thought was the right budget. The architect is on site with learned program needs going forward. The original six-point-five was to always fix the police station and town hall. For me, that's what this new twelve-million-dollar combined project is going to do. It's going to fix both of them. All of a sudden, when we got to a figure of six-point-five and it wasn't enough money, everyone just wanted to build a police station. No one wanted to care about what happened to town hall and all those employees. So the responsible thing for at least the executive board of the selectmen, at least in my way of thinking, is to still proceed to the best way possible to build something that solves the original focus of needs, which was a town hall police station. And the combined building seems to do that for the least amount of money and the best way.
I just want to make two quick comments. One's on operational costs, just something, it's not the biggest nut to crack, but something we all need to consider in this equation. Just for comparison, operational costs of the old town hall building, with fifty thousand or a little better, that's heating, cooling, maintenance, cleaning, all those things. So just having that building, you know, that'll... We'll have more operational costs if we spread ourselves out. I know some of the footprint of the existing building, when you factor all-in, would cancel that out, but the more buildings we have, the higher the operational costs will be. And also to comment on the tax bill on the average house, it's a hard reality to face, but if two-hundred-and-eight to two-hundred-and-forty dollars is the difference between you staying in your house or losing your house, you're already doomed. You're already doomed. You can't have one window replaced by a copper for that cost. If two-hundred-and-fifty is the... Or two-hundred-and-eight's the straw that broke the camel's back, you're all done. I mean, it's... That's just life. It's reality.
But that's not the end of it. Next year, there'll be something else the town needs.
But that's life.
But that is life.
So to plan for it and do it in increments is better than to wait for the perfect storm of failure here, there, and everywhere, school issues that then come up, and perpetual cycles to drag it out. And as it started in 2014, the good thought was is that that exclusion is going down, and so we could add back to it and start paying it off to keep it reasonable and be prepared for the future. But we've got a little sidetracked in that. You know, that is the only reason, but that was a big reason. Any more questions?
Just a question for the architects. Do you have a 3D render of the street view?
Not yet.
It's been requested at the last... After the last course, I was thinking, so that's in progress.
All right.
I'm trying to avoid a little bit of who said what, when, but I feel compelled to note that my memory in my recording of the tape from that October 2015 meeting in the old town hall was that people were really emphasizing the police station, the police station, the police station. A few people tried to say, "Oh, what about town hall?", but it really came back to the police station, the police station, the police station as a priority. Hence my ongoing concern that we may lose the whole thing and including time with the proposal that's on the table. And just as another general comment I want to make is, well, the original option one showed a thirteen-thousand-square-foot police station. Apparently, the police can live with a smaller one. Admittedly, it doesn't show all the utilities and stuff like that, that would be done with a common building. But I would suggest that something less than thirteen-thousand square feet, say ten thousand, because it's a nice, easy number to say, might be all that's needed. That would reduce the cost considerably for a standalone building. Finally, one other item in the budget, which I would love to have explained during a town meeting, is the so-called contingency number of, you know, roughly a million dollars. My understanding is that if the bids came in lower, suddenly that money wouldn't be spent, but yet we would borrow a million dollars at X percentage rate into the foreseeable future, and it would end up being used as free cash, which is a lot less controllable by people at town meeting. So I'm concerned about this line I've...
See, free cash, everything's allocated at town meeting by the meeting. The budget's voted by the meeting. Free cash doesn't disappear out of folks' control. Tracy, would you like to comment?
And you only borrow what you're actually going to be spending so that it doesn't quite happen the way you mentioned yesterday.
But again, it appears to me that when you go out for a bond, you're going to go out for a bond of whatever the number is, and that's going to include money for the contingency. And once you bond that money, well, then you're obligated to pay it at the interest rate that was prevailing in the garden. But we can go back and forth on this a lot. I just want to let you know it's a concern.
Until you're finished, and then it will lead to a final bond that you're going to pay out. And so the number is what you spend, not just the lump sum that you get.
Right.
Right, but there have been things like with the water and sewer hookup for this area, that the bids came in less, so we had extra money left around somewhere, money that did not go back to the taxpayers, but rather went into...
That was not a debt overrep. That was allocation from town meeting for a project, and then that money returns to the town's coffers, and the town, again, decides where to allocate it. This is borrowing. If we don't borrow the money, we don't have to pay for it.
Again, I see why there are questions can arise, but again, I still believe a standalone police station is the way to go. And then I would trust the people of the town to step up what else is needed to fix up town hall.
I just have a couple of simple questions. From what I'm looking at on the plans, it seems like we're going to tear down the old town hall and the entire mound that it's built on, right? So it's going to be basically like, not really, but street level to start with?
Yes and no. We are going to tear down the town hall, but part of the design anticipates that we're going to try and keep the earth as mounded as it is, or maybe even increase the height so that we can hide a portion of the building in the hillside, essentially, as much as we can. Because a new building is going to have a taller floor-to-floor height than the existing building. It's about eight feet or so from the lower level of the existing town hall to the upper level of existing town hall, and we're not going to be able to build an eight-foot floor-to-floor in a new building, nor should you want to. It's like a basement, essentially, and it is a basement. So in a new building, we're going to have a taller overall building, but we're going to try and bury that as much as we can in that hillside. So we're going to try to get as close to that existing level as possible, so the building will go away, and we're going to try and mound the earth around it so that it's less apparent as to the height.
Does that answer your question? Spent a bit of money to renovate town hall.
They don't count.
And may utilize any of the parts that they had bought? I mean, they're available.
Well, we've talked about, they have an updated dispatch board. Bring that over. They're going to bring the antenna over, and we'll re-hook it up to the dispatch. There may need to be some new radios or some pieces of it, but the essence was is they just upgraded it. Yeah, we need to bring that forward. We need to bring the antenna forward. The generator you see out there, I think, is provided by Seabrook Money for Living in the Area, and so that gets brought over. To piggyback on the town hall side of things, there is a pile of new furniture and fancy drapes and stuff planted. We're going to take what we have and move over there and work from there.
Where are the police going? I guess that's going to be the next big question. And we're going to tear down where they are.
We're going to relocate them.
Well, we're going to build a set of trailers here. They'll be... Well, Tracy's pointing at a different thing. So we haven't decided. I had a thought that we put a temporary police station here, but the possibility exists that could use this space. It's not built out yet, so it could be here. But there'll be a temporary... It's a line item in the budget right now for a temporary home while the construction is ongoing. We'll have to move... They have to be 24/7 operations, so we'll have to move their communications equipment to the new location, the temporary location, then back into the new building. So that is part of that twelve-million-dollar cost.
I just want to say thanks to everybody that presented the information today. I think a lot of interesting questions and concerns were voiced, but I just have to say, it's very disheartening to me that less than one percent of the population of the town is here to get this information today. It's going to be an interesting special town meeting on October 23rd. Less than one percent of the population will be somewhat informed thanks to what you did today.
Six thousand, six hundred people in town, four thousand and some odd registered voters, three thousand some odd property owners, and we have average attendance of four hundred at annual town meeting, less at special town meeting.
Yep.
Point taken. Anybody else? Go after this up.
Tracy, real quick, I'm new to town, right across the street, and very happy that first study is done, and we're going with this. I like this. I think it was when we moved to town, we wondered why we didn't see a town hall on the common, so it's good. But I just wanted to add to your... I know this is all conceptual, but if you could think about the safety of the people walking from that required parking to that town hall, there is no sidewalk and that kind of thing, and you still have to walk in front of the fire station, so...
So admittedly, that's less ideal, walking in front of the fire station, but as part of this project, there would be a sidewalk taking you from that parking lot to the town hall, so that you'd be, you know, protected, essentially. We can't do anything about the fact the fire station is where it is, and those fire trucks will come out. But everything else will be taken care of.
Great. Thank you.
Eric, I want to thank everybody here, too, because there's a lot of hard work over the years. My question, first question is, what is on the warrant? Is it one or two of these in the handout sheets? What's presently going on there? Is it one and two?
The warrant is... We're not voting on projects for the warrant. We're just voting for a dollar grab. So this, like I think Jeff said, the conceptual drawing is not...
There's one plan.
There's two plans here. First is called a first study, and the other one's called a proposed option. At town meeting, what are we going to talk to the people about? Both?
No. This is the option that's being brought up.
Only one option.
There's a study that got you to the option. A couple of studies that got you to the option.
Okay, so we're at twelve million dollars. I believe this is too big a building, it's too expensive, the lot's too small, it's a bad location, and I think I want to succeed our needs. I also believe there's a separation...
So you want to build a bigger...
Eric, could I finish, please?
You just said it won't meet our needs. I know, Jim, but...
Could I finish, please?
Go ahead. Please finish.
I believe there's a separation of powers physical of the police station not to be attended at the town hall would be a good thing. I also want to comment that the room we're sitting in here is four thousand square feet. That's important. I've run through four proposals. This took me an hour this morning to do. The original one, going back 2016, bringing the dollars up ahead, would be maybe nine million dollars. Eric and I thought before the meeting, his number was even less than that.
Just the installation.
Now, secondly, my second, third, and fourth itemized numbers are adding a thousand square feet to the town hall from the one that you had two years ago. The number then would be nine-point-three. Adding two thousand square feet to the proposal two years ago to the town hall would be nine-point-eight. And adding three thousand square feet to the town hall you had two years ago would be ten-point-two. So if you went to the most expensive proposal I had, with my numbers, all based on the unit cost that the town has put out on the table in the last two months. The total square footage for town hall would be ten thousand, six hundred. The total for the police station would be ten thousand, and that's presently what the square footage is in this proposal here. My numbers come to a little over ten, the town's numbers come to twelve. So I believe that by putting renovating and adding on to town hall, there's going to be a standalone police station over here would save you two million dollars. I'll be wanting to stand up by these numbers and make copies of what you want, but I did want to get this out on the table. I think it's important for people to understand, when I say wants and needs, when I talk about cost, I've got something here based on the square footage that you want and the unit cost that you propose is two million dollars less than the twelve million you put on the warrant.
So we gave you information to get to that. Could you give us a copy of that?
Be glad to.
We can review and respond it.
Be glad to.
And you, you know, you say it's a bad site, and then you say it's a good site. You...
If we can build it to less, that's great.
Yeah, and there is some unknown about what the local market and construction cost will bring in.
It's a concept. Your concept, there's two different concepts. My concept is one, the proposed is the second concept. Your concept is to tear down the town hall and build one building. My concept is to renovate and add to town hall, which you said two years ago, that's what you wanted to do, and that's what the voters approved, and then build a standalone police station. So my numbers go back to two years ago, and they're two million dollars less than your proposal is going to bring to the town meeting.
So when you said that's what we said that we wanted to do, I think that the... At the time that the town voted, the six-and-a-half million, there was also a second item on the warrant of four-point-two million. If we can't... We, being the architects, can't build a police station for six-point-five million, we, no way in hell could build one for four-point-two million. So when you say that we wanted to, the six-and-a-half million was what we got. We tried to make it work. Believe me, we tried to make it work. And these guys are saying, fast forward two years, we can't make that work.
Alicia, that's not what I'm saying. You're completely missing the point. I'm making a comparison between your plan and the plan, basically, you proposed two years ago, with the square footage you want today. Upgrading square footage, upgrading unit cost, we're saving two million dollars.
Well, Eric, you'll vet that out, right?
Yeah, I'll look at his numbers, and we'll take the numbers that we have, and we'll plug in what we think is or isn't there, or confirm what Jim has done. And certainly, if we say it's twelve million, I'd certainly like to get... I know it's a large number. I don't want my taxes to go up, Jim, but I want... I would love to have just a discussion where we all decide just on program. We select a program on an understanding of what the town needs, and then we walk out of here and say, "That's the project that we want."
But let me further the comment that my numbers are pushed to all your requests, and I don't believe... I believe you're asking for two square feet.
Do you think the square footage is too big?
So let me finish here. The ten thousand square foot for the police station hasn't changed in two years. My proposal's using exactly what your unit cost, your ten thousand square feet. The only thing that's changed in the past two years is what you're doing at town hall. And that's grown considerably from what you wanted. When you're entered with the numbers, I don't have to tell you what they are, you already know what they are. So again, my ten million dollars is a number that I don't even believe in because I think the square footage is too big.
Do you think that the building is too big from what they're saying? What they're proposing here, you think that the square footage is too big? Is that what you just said?
I do believe that.
Okay. Well, again, I can go back to saying that I do not want to make the same mistake that the town rally did and build something too small.
I've made an apples-to-apples comparison. The square footage, my plan, versus the square footage, your plan is identical. My plan is two million dollars less than your plan.
If we can do it for two million dollars less, I'm all for that.
This plan is eighteen thousand, six hundred square feet. What did you say yours was?
Again, Jeff.
Eighteen thousand, six hundred square feet. What did you say yours was?
Twenty thousand, six hundred. How I came up with that was what we talked about Tuesday. You wanted to add two thousand feet onto the eighteen-six.
I got you.
What was the construction cost you used for the square foot?
Construction cost, total for town hall was two-point... It was about three million. Police station was four-point-five. That's your direct...
No, per square foot. What did you use per square foot?
If you're talking about, well, it's a variable number depending on what type of work you want to do. The basement renovations, I used three hundred dollars a square foot. The first floor renovations, I used a hundred dollars a square foot. In addition, I used four hundred dollars a square foot, which is identical to the town that's carrying right now. For the police station, I used four hundred and fifty a square foot. Now, so keep in mind, those are only construction costs. In addition to that, you have a half a million dollars in design costs, that's four hundred thousand in OBM costs. Furnishings is six hundred and eighty. Bid moving and other items are one hundred and fifty. Subtotal is nine-point-two. A ten percent contingency is nine hundred thousand, and that's where I come up with ten-point-two.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Jim.
My question. I just want to kind of get a feel for time. So I think you said like six to seven months to get your detailed plan all packed up. And then if it goes forward, groundbreaking would be around August?
Yeah, it depends on when we were released to start, but.
Right, I mean, I think you projected something like the beginning of December.
If, if the project was approved and we were given a go-ahead to start, let's say December one on this process, we'd be, let's say, what, June, starting bidding for the project. And then that takes a couple of months. And so you'd probably be in August when you start groundbreaking. And then approximately a year or so for construction. Forty months or so.
From groundbreaking.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all.
Is the town planning on discussing this first study at Town Meeting?
What's the first study?
This is your one for fourteen million.
No, why don't we talk about that?
Well, it's because we don't hear that today.
Yeah, but at Town, on Town Meeting, why don't we?
Yes, there, there would be a very short and simple, hopefully concise, as I started off. If I could do a better job, a walkthrough of how we got to the concept.
That being said, because it's the handout today, what you're telling us on this sheet for the first study is twenty-five thousand, six hundred square feet. And what you're telling us in the proposal is eighteen thousand, six hundred. So if in fact you do bring this up, you should make it an apples to apples comparison. Because right now, it's apples and pears and there's a huge difference in what you're putting. And you're handing out the paper, okay? This is a very distorted piece of paper they're handing out.
I think the point is that, to be fair to everyone that's involved, is that the reason it was provided is that was the starting point. And it's different from what we are today. We're not asking you to make a comparison between the two because we started. Did you let me finish?
They don't know that.
You wouldn't let me finish?
Excuse me.
So it's important for people to understand, this is an iterative process. We started at the beginning. We worked with a program that got to that number. We got a budget based on that program, based upon what the town originally wanted to do, which is to build a new police station and renovate the Town Hall. That led us to the comments that were made at the beginning of the meeting, which was there was no way the town could afford the fourteen million dollars that that project was going to cost. So from that point forward, the town asked, Board of Selectmen asked, what could we do for a lower dollar value? Which is what we did in the meantime. There's a number of different iterations till we got where we are today with a combined building that tried to make the, the best use of the program that we had to get to the police to the smallest number that they could be at, the town to the smallest number that they could be at in function. Which combining the two made the most effective use of the town's dollars, even considering we would have to build a temporary police station. That's seven hundred and fifty thousand still included. That's the, the least amount of money for the best amount of program. And so I think the, the reason was put on the handout was to just give people an understanding of where we started from to where we are today. It was not meant as a either or, option A, option B.
I think if we just, I mean, there is one proposed option on the table.
That, I'd suggest if you're going to talk about it, that you limit it to one. All you're going to do is confuse people and it's a very distorted piece of paper. People here today, I'm sure they don't even understand it.
The point being that when you ask the police, when you ask the Town Hall what space they need to provide the best service to the residents, they came up with this, this space allotment, which came up to be fourteen million. And everybody knew that that wasn't going to fly and that was too much. And so the effort was made to condense it down to the minimum space program. And that's the option being presented. Well, thanks, everybody. This is great. Appreciate it.